Okay, the next item this evening is going to be public comments. So, the first person on here is Thompson. Could you please come forward, state your name, your address, please? And please limit our public comments to five minutes.
Marion Thompson. I live at 1313 West 16th. And I'd like to know what the rules are on yard selling.
Who's what?
When you have a yard sale. And I put my signs out. I have two yard sales a year, one in May, one in October. My daughters and my sons bring stuff over so I can make enough money to pay my high taxes, which go up all the time. And I asked Larry Hicks in May, maybe before I had my sale, Larry, what is the rules on the yard sale? He says, let me ask. And he called me back that afternoon. He said, okay, put your signs out. Which I did. Including I put signs out in my friend's yard. My friend had called me, she says, Marion. I just seen the truck pull up, and I wanted to get my phone, tried to take a picture of the person, was a city truck. By the time she got her phone, they drove off. And my sign was set way back, 10 feet. So, my signs were all gone. I called Larry up, he said, you must be kidding me. I said, yes. I said, well, I've been busy, kind of sickly, I'm a widow, and I have a yard sale coming up again in October, to make the money to pay my taxes. So, I'm here to find out if somebody going again to get my signs. I know I got told it's four days, you can have a yard sale, four days. And, uh, how is it, four days? You can have a yard sale four days and not longer than...
The department's right behind you over here.
Yeah.
He could help us.
Four times. Four times a year, three days each time. Four times a year.
Well, I want to have two.
At the same location. Now, we have some that have more than that. And it's just a matter of having to track them and send them a letter, let them know you're in violation. But four times, three days at a time. So, if you do it one day, and then, instead of three consecutive days, and then has a break, that's one occurrence each time that there's a break in between. Now, I don't, I think we need to rewrite that ordinance.
And sign can only be on premise?
Yeah. Signs are illegal signs, period. If they're not on, they're called an off-premise sign. If you put a yard sale sign...
In a neighbor's yard or somebody else's yard?
Anywhere other than the proper place the sale is held.
Well, I think I should have just as much right in anybody else who runs for office to put the signs everywhere, not including even on the curb.
There's a law that protects this.
And I seen signs everywhere, like Rent-A-Own. That man had signs everywhere in town. They stayed out there for weeks. Nobody get those. I see signs on the poles, they don't get those. I put mine out when my yard sale is over with, I go and get them back. I pick them back up. I said, people leaving here, it's getting scary. I've been here since 61. When I came here, this town was busy. They had the police and MP working the streets, up and down. Took us a month to get a place to stay here. You don't have the problem no more. I mean, you have over 250 houses right now up for sale, not mentioning the rental property. The businesses are leaving. We don't have no place. They say, spend your money here in town. Where at? It's no place to go uptown. Nothing. We have two restaurants, coaches, and ice, and Italian restaurant. I mean, that's it. And I really consider, I put mine up for sale and leave here too, because it's getting tourist management to live here, special for a single person. Yeah, I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
We have another public comment. Bill and Joanne Moore, please. Come forward, state your name, address.
I'm Bill Moore, and this is...
Joanne Moore. And we reside at 118 Cheyenne Drive.
We were told that this would be the place to come to make a public comment about our organization. So, if it's okay with you, we'd like to try and do that. So, we are board of director members for the Junction City Car and Place here in town. It's located at 1013 B West 8th Street, on the north side of the SRS Goodwill Building. And the telephone number is 785-238-4428. And we also have a list of information about our organization on the website at www.jccarandplace.org. A little brief background about the JCCP. It was established in 2004 as a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization, Community Outreach Center. And basically, what we do is we help folks with clothing, emergency food, basic medical care, and some case management screening. And the services are all free of charge. Most of our staff is volunteers. And basically, we're here to help our city meet some basic needs of some folks that have needed help in hand. So, in our operating hours, on Monday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for clothing. Tuesday, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for emergency food. Wednesday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for clothing. Thursday, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for clothing. Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for clothing. And Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for clothing, and the free medical clinic on designated days. And we also offer free basic computer classes at the Car and Place.
And just a little caveat also, the emergency food, if someone is in dire need, although we say it's on Tuesday, we do make, we make ourselves available in case someone needs on another day. We are here to let the city commission know that Junction City Car and Place is capable, ready, and most willing to help out our city meet the needs of those who may need a helping hand. Lastly, the Car and Place volunteers, the Car and Place needs volunteers who want to make a difference and give back to this wonderful city of ours. Committed volunteers shall help make a difference and keep our doors open. We can't keep our doors open if we don't have the volunteers. And that's what we're here for, to tell the Junction City about who we are, and also, if there's anyone out there that's willing to come out and assist us, we greatly need the assistance, whether you're a senior citizen, or maybe someone just getting out of high school and trying to, you know, you're going to school part-time and don't know what to do with your time. We ask that you guys come, ask that they come out and assist us with the volunteers, because that's how, that's how we're here, to meet the needs of those who are less fortunate.
So, thank you for your time, and we appreciate being able to stand here and make this public comment about the Junction City Car and Place.
Thank you so much. I've been to the Car and Place before and dropped off things, and will definitely be able to share that you guys are looking for volunteers.
Yes, ma'am.
There are a lot of people in Junction City who want to volunteer, and that's a good opportunity and place to point them in that direction.
Most definitely. Thank you so much. We do appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. The next item this evening is going to be the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
None here.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is going to be special presentations. First one is going to be the recognition of Josh Allen, Jeremy Sutton, Nicholas Nutter, and John Shepek being promoted to engineer with the Junction City Fire Department.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, the Junction City Fire Department is honored to present to the board the following personnel that have successfully completed the promotional process assessment for engineer for Junction City Fire Department. This process consisted of a 100-question assessment on apparatus driving, pumping, and operation and aerial operations, an interview panel consisting of professional peers from Salina Fire Department, Manhattan Fire Department, and Fort Riley Fire Rescue. The final process was an assessment of driving skills and a prescribed course, and assessment of skills on actual pumping of an apparatus. It's my honor to present this evening Josh Allen for promotion to engineer. He'll be at shift two, station two.
Ma'am, if you want to come up front, here you can.
Congratulations.
You've got to wait for a picture. Don't go too far.
Look nice now, smile.
Show your teeth.
Jeremy Sutton, engineer, second shift, station one.
Nicholas Nutter, engineer, shift three, station two.
John Shepek, engineer, shift one, station two.
We wish each of them the most success as they move forward and face the challenges for Junction City. I thank you for your time.
Next item this evening is going to be a presentation regarding the final report of the Fort Riley Joint Land Use Study. Mr. Dinkle?
We don't have the presentation because we all attended at different points in time because of scheduling.
Disregard that. We'll move right on to the next item, new business. Consideration of Resolution Number 2827, adoption of the Fort Riley Joint Land Use Study Final Report.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, as everybody knows, the Joint Land Use Study has been an ongoing process, I believe, for 10 months. And a number of us, I was on the tech committee, and then there were some other committees involved, and we've had quite a bit involved from the city's standpoint. And of course, they didn't come here tonight because they're trying to schedule 11 commission, 11 government by meetings in a three-to-four day period. And so, Commissioner Ryan attended yesterday, and some of us attended Grandview Plaza at night, so everything works well. These are the recommendations they're making, I think they're all good recommendations. Ours and Grandview Plaza were somewhat similar. They have a couple of flight pattern things that we don't have because of where we sit here. So, resolution's in place. If you want to take more time to look at it, you can, but almost everybody's passing them. We can pass it tonight and then move forward. What the next step is going to be is, is Flint's Regional Council is then going to apply for more federal money. The feds, through the Department of, Army, whatever department it is, there's funds available, not Army.
Government.
OEA, yeah. Excuse me, OEA. OEA is going to have funds available, and those are nine to 10 grants. Don't know if we'll get any over here, but, you know, of course, I think the bigger impact counties on the Fort Riley and the Jay-Lu study are those on the east and north side rather than ours over here. So, I think go forward in the process. Everybody in this community had a chance to get involved in the process at some point in time, and then, from phone calls in to surveys to coming to different meetings. So, I think I'm real comfortable with it. So, I'd recommend approval of the resolution.
The Joint Land Use Study was a study commissioned by OEA for the military use out on Fort Riley. It's a cooperative effort between Fort Riley and all of the surrounding communities. So, this process over the last 10 months, as you've mentioned, the meetings have been held. There are, there are things that happened on Fort Riley, such as noise, that they wanted to address, and they wanted to make sure that the communities were aware that part of a military installation, along with that, comes big guns making noise, or helicopters flying over. There's some other, there's some other things that go on out at Fort Riley that the community needs to be aware of. And so, that joint use study involved all of those communities that surround Fort Riley that could have an impact on the military mission. And so, they were, they were vetted. Questions were given, questions were answered. The community had a survey and put in questions to the study group, and those questions were all answered back. And the final product is a, a land use study that, in the final analysis, Fort Riley gets along with its partners outside the gate, and its partners outside the gate get along with Fort Riley. We're glad they're here. We want to keep them here. And when they go to do the base realignment and closure studies, one of the checkboxes on that study at a BRAC level is, has your community done a, a joint land use study? And so, it was important to have those, those items checked off as, as we move forward and as BRAC may or may not come up in the future. We've, we've done the homework, and we've done some of the things that needed to be done to ensure the Army that the community partners and the military partners are working together. It's kind of the bottom line for the Joint Land Use Study.
Thank you for, thank you, Commissioner, for that nice summary of the Jay-Lu's.
You're welcome. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 5-0, thank you. Next item this evening is going to be a consideration of the special event permit application for the Girl Scouts of USA Service Unit 706 to have a trunk or treat at 921 West 4th Street on October the 13th, 2017.
Hi, so I'm Kathy Stage, event planner for our Girl Scout Service Unit 706. I'm just here to answer any questions. But I think it's pretty much straightforward. The girls, this would be the first time that our service unit has held a trunk or treat, and we try to strive every year to get the girls more active, because our council area is so big. It ranges from northeast Kansas through northwest Missouri. A lot of our events take place in the Kansas City area. So, the girls don't have a lot of opportunities to interact with Girl Scouts as a whole. So, I decided, hey, it's Halloween, why don't we do like a fun little event for the girls? And the parking lot in question is the parking lot in the Girl Scout house in 4th Street.
Thank you. And I think the Girl Scouts are doing a lot of great things for the community, and we appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I know that they look forward to, and at least mine, look forward to the Saturday cleanup.
I appreciate that.
Will this just be for the Girl Scouts?
Yes, sir. Right now, our number for registered Girl Scouts, which our fiscal year ends on September 29th, I believe, is at 150, but not saying that all 150 girls would participate, just because a lot of girls have already moved, but they're still technically on our roster. But we feel like if we expanded it to the communities, or even we thought about Boy Scouts, it would just be too big for us. And so, with this being the first year, we just want to keep it local just to our girls and their families, of course.
What is a trunk or treat?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, a trunk or treat is just like you...
They're the Girl Scouts, so...
Well, it's not a Girl Scout thing. You know, boys can be in Girl Scouts too.
Cookies are good, though.
January 1st. But a trunk or treat is where you get a car, you open up your trunk, and you decorate your trunk or your car as a theme. It can be any theme you like. And then you just hand out candies, and the girls just walk from car to car to car, receiving treats.
So, it's not for the public, it's for just the girls?
Just for the girls and their siblings.
Leave their candy, you just leave them alone.
They'll buy any help on.
Girl Scouts.
Yeah. Well, our cookies are more better than our candy.
Agreed.
Well, I like them both, so.
The reason we put this on as a special agenda, because they're using a public parking lot for private use, and so that was why. Otherwise, it normally wouldn't come to you.
Yeah, so, if it was, I don't know, Halloween was during the summer in June, we knew that we would go into a conflict with the parking lot for the city pool and the tennis courts as being used. But we figured, since the pool is drained, no one really goes to play tennis at the time of hour in question, then we would hopefully try to have it there.
Need to fix the spelling on our application. Is that our application or their application? Special? Top? I'm going to defer on this one.
Oh, yeah.
Special.
That must be our. All right.
I move to approve the special event permit application for the Girl Scouts of USA Service Unit 706 to have a trunk or treat at 921 West 4th Street on October 13th, 2017.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Have fun.
Thank you, guys.
We'll be down to see you.
Don't let her down there. You don't have a candy left.
I would like to make a side note that Girl Scouts also sell candy, and this is technically our candy season.
Well, then we can come. Bring money.
Have a tall Girl Scout with a big smile.
Thank you. Next item this evening is going to be the Consideration of Resolution Number R2826, setting a public hearing date of November the 7th, 2017, to address the declaration of 1023 West 8th Street as an unsafe and/or dangerous structure unfit for human use or habitation.
I'd be happy to answer any questions if you might have any.
Well, why don't you make a bit of a presentation about the current...
I do have...
Status of the property.
What the status of the property is, is exactly the same condition it was in two months ago when we brought this forward, voted and approved it to take it down, and then Mr. Ruiz went to the court, I believe, and filed a motion. I think, I never was served, so I don't know exactly what the motion was, nor was the city manager, but...
So, he hasn't put in any other permits?
I've got pictures for you today, pictures.
Has he put any permits or anything into, do any kind of work or anything like that?
He originally had a permit that he applied for to do general construction, but that's when we got involved the last time we were here with the interior remodel, and then got to the questions that I've been asking him, Mr. Ruiz, all along about the pictures of the abated mold, because that has not been addressed. It's just got fresh paint all over the front of the house. It's been on there for a couple of months now.
So, since that last meeting, he hasn't...
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Okay, no permits, no nothing.
Got a new permit, because his permit expired.
It's real close to expiring as it is.
I didn't know, I mean...
I think it was taken out February 20-something.
February sometime. So, if he still has an active permit...
Yes and no. You still have to apply, you have to ask.
I think August 31st is my...
Is that what it was? I can't remember for sure. I should have looked for it, it came today. But that gets us to where we're at today. No work, as you can see from the pictures. And if you'll take a look, I actually took a lot, about 15, 17 pictures. But I got close to the paint. All it's doing is help hold the holes in the siding to make them look more presentable. But if you look, there's a lot of those slate shingles when you go to put those on. If you've never put them on before, you have to pre-drill holes, and you have to actually set nails that way. If you don't, you break the slate tiles when you're trying to install them. And as you can see, there's a picture in there somewhere where they installed about 20 or 30, and they're, they're just hanging there. They're not actually installed.
Well, we request a nice resolution to have another hearing. Of course, we discussed this, and questions about ownership last year, and service, and all those things. Of course, my recommendation that we just start the process over. We'll have the hearing November...
It's exactly, yes, the 7th.
November 7th.
Time frame is...
There is no legal requirement, even though you can give 120 days, you can give 15 or 30 days also. It's called a reasonable amount of time, is what the statute says. And so...
For you to determine.
If the resolution's passed tonight, it'll be in the newspaper twice, our official paper, Junction City, Daily Union. And then it'll also be sent in certified mail to him and to other parties that may have a, have a interest.
Yeah, exactly. Anybody identified is interested in it.
That'd be the process there. And my recommendation is to move forward with this one, just because that way we, we know the red flags that were put up there, right or wrong or indifferent. I think it's just, it's probably more beneficial for the city and for, and for the taxpayers.
So, are we actually rescinding the motion?
That's the next one.
Okay.
Commissioner McAllister.
Yeah.
And as Mr. Land has stated at the last meeting, because we got into a tic-tac with Mr. Ruiz, but I asked him specifically, who did the craft work? And as you can see from the pictures, it's in the same condition. About to break some stuff here. It's in the same condition it was when I took the pictures two months ago. That insulation and the sheet rock, it hasn't went any farther, and we have not been contacted by anybody that's a licensed electrician, plumber, or mechanical person that says, I'm doing the work for him. So, we are at a standstill.
Oh, but he was, he was sick, right?
That's what Mr. Ruiz said, yes. But I've since talked to the gentleman.
So, this has been going on for over a year?
Yeah, it's over a year.
18 months at least, and...
Well, Mark came probably a year ago, June.
Been about a year.
The past, this resolution...
Yes.
You had your public hearing in September-ish, at that point in time, about a year now.
15, 16 months.
Yeah. At that point in time, just like if we go forward, there's, there'll be a hearing, where basically Mark will show why he thinks it's unsafe or dangerous, and any party can then say, well, I don't think it is. And then the commission makes a decision at night, adopting a new resolution, setting a...
Fix it.
Fix the date.
A deadline to fix it.
I want to say drop dead, you're better for sure. Date to get it done by, and if not, we'll move forward and demolish it.
I move to approve Resolution 2826, setting a public hearing date of November 7th, 2017, to address declaration of 1023 West 8th Street as an unsafe and/or dangerous structure unfit for human use or habitation.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you, sir. Next item this evening is going to be to rescind the previous motion made on July the 18th, 2017, approving the award of the demolition of 1023 West 8th Street bid to Pearson Evac Excavation in the amount not to exceed $3,750.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, of course, we accept the bid then, and this will just formally, if you rescind the motion, would make that motion not useful, and so the bid would be turned down, and we'd move forward then with the process we just had above.
How does that affect the awardee?
He didn't start anything.
He didn't start anything. He has no, he has no out-of-pocket money.
He has no loss.
Have you heard from him?
I did, today.
Okay.
I talked to him today. He's actually working on a private property storm drainage deal for Bramledge Investments, and I had a conversation with him, because they called me over there to look at a storm drain. And he asked me, well, where are we at? And he asked me, well, where are we at, where, you know? And I told him, I said, "It's potentially going to be rescinded, and you're going to have to rebid it if and when he doesn't do anything to correct the issues at hand." So he said, "Okay." He said, "Just send it to me again." He said, "You know, I'll bid it."
Good.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
I move to rescind the previous motion made on July 18th, 2017, approving the award of the demolition of 1023 West Eighth Street bid to Pearson Excavation, in the amount of not to exceed $3,750. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Nothing here.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Next item this evening is going to be the consideration to purchase two servers for use in the city's network from SHI, in the amount of $10,760.32. Mr. Gorman.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, yes, the city's fiscal policy requires any purchases over $10,000 to be brought before the commission for approval. These are servers that we use in our virtual environment to run our virtual servers, and they're, the two that they will be replacing are on their five-year life cycle. The items were budgeted in the 2017 budget, and we direct solicited three of our, we don't have any local vendors that could provide it. We direct solicited three vendors that we work with all the time to get the best pricing, and SHI came back with the best price.
What happens to the old servers? Can-
It depends. If they, if, if they still have a useful life, we try and repurpose them somewhere else in the city, and maybe run something else. If they're not, we try and take them apart and use the pieces elsewhere in the city to replace other things. It just, it kind of depends upon what we need at the time.
Is that SHI Technologies, or?
It's SHI International. I don't know what the acronym SHI stands for. It's like CDW, one of their competitors. I don't know what that stands for either. It's, they're based out of New Jersey.
It made me concerned about the quality of the components when I thought of that.
Yeah, well, they're HP servers. Actually, we're getting a deal on them, because we received notice this month that HP is having almost a 75% off sale, so we're getting two of them for basically the price of one. So we figured it was best to strike while the iron is hot.
When do you want these servers, if they get approved?
If, if, if they get approved by the commission tonight, I will put a PO in the system tomorrow morning, and once it's approved by Cheryl, I will forward it to SHI, and they will start sending it. We'll probably have them in our possession early next week at the latest.
And then you'll have to, how much downtime or time is it going to take you to trade them all out?
None.
Oh.
None, because we put, we'll put them in the rack, and then we'll move, once we get them up and running with all the software and part of our system, we will just move the servers while they're running, from one server to another, with no downtime. Occasionally, we do have to shut them down, but we usually do that on a Sunday morning.
Okay, thank you.
IT is fun.
Isn't it?
Yes.
Did you get an email?
Let me look at it.
Mine is dead.
You need some virtual money for the virtual-
I will have, you know, I texted Mike at the meeting and said, "Remind me to order a spare power cord for those Surface 3s." So we'll have one on hand, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. It's my fault, it's dead.
If you'd stare at that Facebook Live, it'd probably be fun.
I haven't used it, but it's written, "June," it took me that long to read it.
I move to approve the purchase of two servers for the use of the city's network from SHI, in the amount of $10,760.32. Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Nothing here.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is the consideration of the KCJIS outside agency agreement with the Gary County Sheriff's Department. Mr. Gorman.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, KCJIS is the Kansas Criminal Justice Information System, and one of the requirements is that each agency that has access to KCJIS has a, what they call a Lasso, Local Area Security Officer, person in charge of the network and all that. Since the sheriff's office is part of our network, they don't have anybody on staff who can be the Lasso, so they appoint me. I've been the Lasso there for 10 or 12 years, but since it's an agreement with an outside agen, an agency outside the city, the boss said that I needed to bring it to you for your approval, before we re-initiate the, the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I have it here. I'm also the Lasso for the police department, the municipal court, and they're getting ready to put the jail on their own ORI, so I'll be bringing another agreement back to you for the jail as well.
How about Granville Plaza?
Granville Plaza does not have a KCJIS account.
Okay.
But if, if that were the case, I would be the Lasso for there as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
The will of the commission?
Move to approve the consideration of the KCJIS outside agency agreement with the Gary County Sheriff's Department. Second.
Okay, I have a motion.
Thing on the web about of the KCJIS. The Sheriff's Department, check it out.
Thank you.
I tell you, those phones will do that. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Nothing here.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commission.
Next item this evening is going to be the consideration to award the bulk de-icing salt bid to Independent Salt Company, in the amount of $46,524. Mr. Ibarra.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. We are looking to award the bid of purchasing bulk salt to Independent Salt. We put out a bid on September 7th for 1,200 tons of salt. Got three qualified bids. One was from Independent Salt, for delivered price of $38.77, for $46,524. Hutchison did not have a bid, but they did have one for pickup price, and then Central Salt had a bid of 47.35 a ton, for $56,820. The reason we put the pickup price bid is, in case we could not get salt trucked to us, we're allowed then to go and pick that salt up. And Independent gave us a price of $30 for pickup, so if we picked up 1,200 tons, it'd be $36,000. Hutchison did have a bid for that, and was $32 a ton, for $38,400, and then Central Salt had a bid of $40, $40 a ton, for $48,000. So we recommend approval for 1,200 tons of salt from Independent Salt, for the price of $46,524.
Ray, if you just buy 1,200 tons of salt, you just do it times 38.77?
Correct.
We're not locking in at 1,200 tons?
No. Because last year, we did the same thing. We got, and we got a better price this year than we did last year. Last year's was 41.65, I believe, a ton, and this year, it's 38.77, and we did not pick up any salt last year.
Are we getting about the same amount as we did last year?
Correct, 1,200 tons. We're trying to get away from using sand with our mix. That way, all we have to do is just clean up it, because once we put that sand down, we just, just a bigger mess on the street.
We're not getting, we're not getting any salt, Madam Mayor. We're getting the price here for up to 1,200 tons. So like last year, he didn't buy any salt last year.
I didn't buy any salt, because of the mild winter when we had-
As needed.
As needed, but up to 1,200 tons.
Guaranteed price.
And the nice part about it is, we don't have to own storage, and they get it here and everything else.
So we didn't use that much last year, then we saved money?
Correct, we didn't. It didn't come out of the street maintenance button.
Okay, good.
Which you're going to have, and there's going to be a year, I hope not soon, but that he's going to need more than 1,200 tons. I mean, it's, it's going to happen, I mean-
Have we researched, or have we done any more with the inter-local agreement with Fort Riley and their salt?
What I understand from talking to, I believe it's Kelly Prescott, she said that they're still in works with, with us, and I think Manhattan, Manhattan has talked quite a bit with Fort Riley about doing that, so we'll see how that goes.
Still stalled in legal.
Right.
Or Riley legal.
It shouldn't be anymore. It was made very clear by the commanding general, and the-
I think they still have some legal issues.
No.
They should have been worked through.
We haven't heard a word.
And if Manhattan is, is trying to come up with an agreement, we need to, we just need to stay on top of it. And, and if we could do that through the three communities, we may get a better price, or it may work out to the benefit of all three communities. I just don't want that to fall off.
Are you working with the county commissioners on this, the salt as well, because, or on the de-icing stuff, because I'm thinking that the county is working with the fort on it as well? So-
You've been to those meetings, haven't you?
I've been to meetings, and the county's been with the meetings, too.
I've thought I've heard the commissioner been and talked about it.
Yeah, so we've talked about it, and I can make contact with the Public Works Director, Rob Ott, and I can get some conversation going with them, see where they're at with, with Fort Riley.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve the bulk salt bid as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Nothing here.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item this evening is going to be the consideration to purchase a used 2010 motor grater from Victor L. Phillips Company, in the amount of $65,000. Mr. Ibarra.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, currently, the street department has two motor graders. One's a 1976 John Deere, and the other one's a 1983 A500 galleon. The 1976 John Deere grater does not work. It's got a lot of issues with the hydraulics, and I didn't want to spend the money, that much money, to fix something that old. The 1983 galleon works, but at times, it doesn't work, and it's got a lot of hydraulic issues with it. And in this year's budget, in the 2018 budget that we presented, we requested to purchase a used grater. And once you approved that, I went to the vendors that are out there with that motor graders and asked them, you know, "Look for me a used, a well-used motor grater." Victor L. Phillips did come up with one. It's a 2010, and it has 67, I mean, 3,700 hours on it, very well maintained, and they wanted 70,000 more. They were going to give us 5,000 for the 1983 grater, and then, so the purchase price would be $65,000. Also in your packet, I showed you a used grater from Murphy Tractor. It was a 2007, and it was $65,000 as well, but it also had twice as many hours. It had 6,400 hours on it. We've demoed this grater, they allowed us to demo it, and so we feel that it's a good purchase, and we can do it right now. We have monies in the equipment escrow right now of about 34,000, 31, yeah, $34,000. And we could also use, to grab the other 31,000, we could get it either from our street maintenance fund, or from our federal exchange fund program. So that's why we're requesting to purchase this 2010 model.
$5,000, Ray, is that '83 worth keeping, or is it-
We would have to spend-
To have two on, two on site?
We would have to spend a lot of money as far as fixing the hydraulics on it. It leaks a lot, and at times, we can't find what the connection is. Sometimes it starts, and it'll be running, and then it'll just die on us, and then we have to go out and figure out what the situation is, so I don't think for 5,000, I think you'd probably find a better one somewhere, like in Purple Wave or something, an older model for probably, and better condition than this one.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for you. When, if we end up approving this purchase, when are you expecting that you're going to purchase it?
Right away.
So- Didn't he leave it in your lot? He left it with us.
The demo's still in our lot.
It's pretty quick.
And it's going to, and it's going to come out of the 2018 budget, not this year's budget right now?
No.
Let's try to explain it.
Okay.
Okay, in, what the escrow fund he's referring to is, when we said we were going to go out for lease, we went out for lease for X number of dollars, and what we have spent leaves $34,000 in the lease purchase escrow account with US Bank, US Bank. And so all I have to do is get an amendment. If you agree to this, we would get, amend that and include to add the grater to this, so we would end up having a lease on it until it's paid, so as a lease purchase, which is what we were going to do anyway, out of the 2018 budget, it was a lease purchase. We're just putting it on a different lease purchase for the $34,000, for half of it.
Or 2017?
Yeah, out of the 2017 lease purchase, okay? But the other money, the rest of it, I don't have an escrow on it, and it'd either have to come out of his current road maintenance budget, or the FFE. Now, that's one half a dozen of the other, because if he doesn't have sufficient funds in the street maintenance fund, we would take it out of FFE anyway. And we, we just learned, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, that FFE money can be spent on equipment now.
Ooh.
So it doesn't matter either way, whether it's taken out of the general fund, or reimbursed by the FFE fundy. FFE money, it's just, that's what our proposal is, is if you, okay, then we would come back with an amendment from the bank to add the lease, this grater, to the, to the remaining dollars in escrow, with the US Bank loan that we currently have, and won't, and wouldn't use, we would just apply it back to the principal, is what we would do, if we, if we didn't use it up. But we were planning on lease purchasing the road grater anyway, out of the 2018. There was a long list of equipment out of 2018, that we were going to go for lease purchase, so we would have leased purchased anyway. This way, it's only going to be half of it personally leased purchased, and the other half, either out of cash.
What does a new system cost?
A little over $200,000.
$200,000?
I have no idea.
And I think for our operation, we're better off getting a well, well-maintained used grater.
I think the smallest one would start anyway, from 160 to 180, and then-
What happens to the deer?
We could put that on Purple Wave, get rid of that way.
You don't plan to keep it?
No, I don't plan to keep it.
I mean, I just, yeah. I would suggest, this is a surplus, probably.
That's what I think.
I know you manage all the, the budget for the city and everything, so that FFE funds, what kind of a balance, and all that money apparently is not committed right now to-
Well, here's what, I, I did the research to make sure, the balance effective, June 30th, the report we got from them was 856, 856,000. But we've already committed some of the monies for the work on Helen Pond at 19,000. Golden Bell, we haven't received our invoices yet for Golden Bell, which is about 300,000. The lights, the lighting project, we had said we would spend out of FFE money for The lights, the lighting project, we had said we would spend out of FFE money for the path to add the lighting. That's 180 to 200,000, that range.
And that's from 77?
That's probably high, but we're guessing on that right now.
That's not the East Lights.
Yes. And then the trail, the additional money that we have for reimbursement sitting right now was 1,200. And then the match of the trail, I have not submitted that yet. We paid it earlier this year, but I hadn't submitted it yet. It was 214,000. So we have spent, committed money, 734,000. That leaves a balance of 122,600. That's not committed.
The one thing with FFE that's been changed, and Ray went to the meeting last week. Is, is that you say able to stockpile money issue that we did here. As of this next program, if we don't use it by September 15th next year.
Yeah, 2018.
They'll take it away.
18, it goes away. So even the new amount we're going to get, we got, so, and I'm assuming, and, and they're going to keep 75% now rather than 90?
They're, they're going to keep 25%.
25%.
We get 75% on.
So our share is going to be around 200-ish.
Yes.
Do you know when we get that?
They are supposed to send a letter to Cheryl or Alan and say what the new amount is will be for us.
They'll know once we know.
Correct.
They'll know by the first of the year of what the new amount will be.
This year was February too, I mean, it's somewhere around there.
And, and the rest of that hasn't been designated, next year's amount and the 122. I still have a little cleanup in our books too, so it might be a little bit off even that. But still you have about 100,000 at least left over this year plus the 200 next year that you would have to designate a project for.
Thank you for that update.
Chair, would you explain what FFE is again?
Federal Fund Exchange and it is a funnel through of federal money down to the local levels for cities that qualify. And it's governed or controlled by KDOT and KDOT keeps a percentage of it right now for administration and then, and then we get to use the rest for transportation projects. They were pretty specific about transportation in the past, but now they've loosened that up. But it still has to be spent on transportation.
25% for administration is absurd.
I know. It is absurd.
The advantage to us, and I still think it's probably a good bargain for us, the 95 was better. Is that we don't have, if we got the money straight from the Federals, our cost of administration would be a lot higher than that. I mean, we couldn't do near as many projects, be more, there'd be more, a lot of stuff. David's baking wages to everything, to surveys.
Yes.
Even though I think we're getting ripped off by the state, but it's still better than the other way.
Well, we don't have the staff to do and then it increases engineering costs. It increases project costs.
And the projects you can do.
Yeah, and it, and it limits the projects you can do.
So Mr. Abir, you said the, the John Deere is not working, so we probably Purple Wave that. And what'd you say you would do with the 83? Cause you said it's not working most of the time.
Trade in.
Trade in.
It'd be a trade in.
Trade in.
The 5,000, no.
That would, we didn't, would win greater.
Correct.
Yes. We essentially only have one grater now.
Right.
Okay. Do you get a lot of work out of it?
When it works.
Both days. I'm having one of them days a day.
Okay, thank you for that. That was a good update on it. Appreciate that.
Direct purchase anymore. Is it still a direct purchase?
I thought it said it was going to be a lease purchase.
Well, half would be lease purchase after, and then I'll come back with you an amendment to actually amend that lease purchase. If you okay, that, that, we're okay with the financing of that and, and you're okay with that, then I will have the bank do an amendment to the lease purchase.
We're doing 50% cash down and we're doing the other half lease purchase.
Basically. In approximately half, not exactly half, but approximately.
Spatial.
Yeah.
How long will it take to pay off? I'm just wondering.
Lease purchases, we do a five-year.
Five-year?
Five-year.
Even on, okay.
Yeah. At least that's all, all we've extended them out in the recent years since I've been here. And equipment purchases, we haven't gone beyond five years.
And we have the money budgeted to make that lease purchase payment.
Yeah, for the 2018, yes.
Yeah, and we'll budget the rest of the year somehow.
Yeah, and the rest. And then, yeah, exactly. Cause we had, on the 2017 lease purchase, had budgeted enough for the full amount of, of that payment.
I would move to approve acquiring the 2010 motor grater as described.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Get a new grater.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners.
A new used grater.
A new used one. Rephrased that. Thank you.
New used.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think we'd better consider making a motion to get rid of the John Deere grater.
Oh, yes. Permission, yeah, permission to go ahead and.
This is surplus.
To list of this surplus.
Yes.
So moved.
Surplus.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for thinking of that. Cause otherwise we would have had to come back anyway.
You earned your money today.
Yeah.
Right on top of it.
So quietly finally heard from. I, I didn't know if Mike was over there or not. Good job. Our next item this evening is going to be the consideration to purchase a mobile license plate reader system from Turnkey Mobile Incorporated in the amount of $35,615. Chief Preesi.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. I come before you tonight to seek approval to purchase one mobile license plate reader, an LPR system which will aid in the identification of stolen vehicles, wanted persons, missing persons, Amber Alerts, terrorist subjects, and also aids in the ability of providing historical location information related to criminal investigations. Currently, the Gary County Sheriff's Department has two fixed license plate reader systems on the interstate which have been directly related to the apprehension of 52 criminals since March of 2017 from the surrounding region. This system recently helped with an Amber Alert of the state of Georgia where the missing children recovered as a direct result of the LPR. This system is currently accessible to the Junction City Police Department and has aided in investigations of all types and all types of crimes. The police department has received one bid from the company that supplied the sheriff's department's owned LPR in the amount of $35,615. We have only received one bid to the existing system that we already have access to. These two systems would be one and the same when it comes to collecting and sharing data. This will make the apprehension of criminals, locating missing persons, stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, et cetera, that much easier for the Junction City Police Department and Gary County Sheriff's Department. The budget impact to this is the equipment would be purchased with funds from civil asset forfeiture. There are no special considerations. Staff recommends that we purchase a license plate reader in the amount of $35,615 from Turnkey Mobile. Be glad to ask, answer any questions you may have.
I just have one question for you, Chief. When you, if we approve that, do, will it come with the, its own maintenance or are you going to have to also?
There's a maintenance agreement that will come, come with the cost.
And Turnkey will take care of any issues that y'all might have with it?
During the warranty, yes. Right now the, we are demoing a system that's on our K9 car and we've had it on for about a month. The two LPR systems have, since we've placed it in, in use on the interstate and in our cars, have read over four and a half million plates. And it has historical data, so we can go back and check. Anybody's going up and down the interstate, in town. The big use of LPRs are the commercial industry, banks, insurance companies. They have cars and vehicles going up and down every city in the United States every day, including Fort Riley. Alls they do is read license plates for things like repossessing cars and trying to locate people that have skipped on, on some type of civil case. What this helps us on is that we can locate criminals really quick and we have. We've tracked criminals all across the United States using our system because we now have access to Turnkey's mobile vigilant system, which anywhere in the country, if somebody's traveling, we can track it. And when it hits Gary County, we have a little over a 50-mile area that we can get to the interstate and apprehend somebody. The technology is incredible out there. We have access to it. The state of Ohio just did a kind of a sting operation for three days and included seven states, Pennsylvania, I-70 to Colorado. In a three-day sting, they arrested 52 felons. In Kansas, we had the second amount of drugs taken off the interstate. And they included six states and the Junction City Gary County Sheriff's Department in this operation. Cause we're the only ones active in the state that has this technology right now. And so the KBI, all the agencies up and down I-70, contact us daily for the information that we have to catch bad guys. And it's a real honor to have them calling us. They, we were the first to get the technology, thanks to the sheriff and Tim Brown to get that on the interstate. And it's paying big dividends. We want to move from the interstate into a car and you can take our K9 car, go into any parking lot, read every car in that parking lot in a matter of minutes. And every time it passes something, front, back, sideways, it reads that plate, goes into the system and instantaneously, instantaneously tells us who owns that car and if it's wanted or if it's a felon or if the tag is stolen or this person's wanted somewhere across the country for something like an Amber Alert kidnapping or something like that.
Perfect. Excellent.
Thank you.
I'm assuming these are all over the country. So when Katie's riding back tonight, she's going to get watched.
He's told me that multiple times.
I want to check up on Katie. I can tell you when she leaves, when she comes because we know. Then again, all of you, we can, we can go, the historical data from just the private sector, you know, you wouldn't think that every day somebody's going up and down the street. But if your car isn't parked in front of your house, they can tell probably every time they drive by, they'll tell us. And they'll take a picture, the camera takes a picture of your car. And on the interstate, it can even see at times how many occupants are in the car. So it, it helps identifying if this is the person we're really looking for.
It's just to dispel the rumor, they can't write me a speeding ticket off of it.
No, we're not, we're not, we're, on the interstate, we're not even there. It's just, it's telling us, it's alerting us if some, if we're looking for something. Such as if right now, somebody does something bad. Murder, rape, robbery, ag assault, whatever. We enter that data into our computer systems and then it will tell us where that car is. Will tell us if it just went through the interstate, if it was coming to Gary County, if it was going away from Gary County, if it was in, all of a sudden in Missouri. One, a case that did happen recently, about three weeks ago, something did happen where somebody that we were looking for from another jurisdiction, they called us and said, can you track this person? He's missing and we think something bad's going to happen. Well, within minutes, we said, hey, he's already cleared 30 miles from Junction City, headed eastbound. And so they caught him on an LPR in Missouri. So that was, that fast, within, you know, minutes, we knew he's no longer in our community. We don't have to keep looking for him. And so that, that type of technology is what's really driving law enforcement. And that's also why it's such a big price too.
Thank you.
Chief, I had a picture taken of me about 23 years ago.
Not you.
And I was speeding. I was in a construction zone. Took my license plate, took the picture and they mailed it to me. I went to see the judge. He said, you showed up? I said, yeah. He says, you're good. Go ahead.
That will happen here too, I'm sure.
Can we get something like that? I mean, we can be the first. We can be out there.
Kansas does not have.
Kansas doesn't allow it.
Kansas doesn't allow it. It's not a state law yet.
Maryland's doing it.
Yeah.
Kansas doesn't allow for.
But sometime next year, we will have digit tickets. And so we'll just swipe the license and the ticket will print out and, and we'll get people on their way even quicker.
How we Troy has, how we Troy has that.
Wichita's got it.
Okay.
I move to approve the purchase of the mobile license plate reader system from Turnkey Mobile Incorporated in the amount of $35,615.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion?
Nothing here.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item this evening is going to be the consideration of the contract services agreement for construction inspection of the City Hall Plumbing Project and Fire Station One Locker Room Edition with Dean and Dean LLC in the amount of $17,000. Miss Beatty?
Last week, last week, at the last commission meeting, you approved the award of the contract benchmark. And Dean and Dean is, is our architect of record for the management of the project. He would be the construction oversight and this is the formal contract for not to exceed the amount of 17,000 for the construction oversight on this project. We held our first meeting with the contractor and, and received the schedule of the, of the project. Even though he bid it, I'm going to give you a quick update. He only bid it for 180 days. He's hoping to shorten that up and, and he gave us a schedule that takes the project out to February, the first week in February, but hopes to finish it sooner. He also informed us that he's going to attempt to get the bathrooms, at least leave one floor of bathrooms open at all times, which would be a huge improvement to what we originally thought might have to happen. But that, that's based on having to really see what's in the plumbing makeup in the basement. And then, so we'll know that shortly. But that's what his attempt is going to be. Dean and Dean, with this contract, because we're within a block away, said he will actually provide services and be on-site probably daily. Even though that this is a not to exceed or anything, he'll probably be around. He's right next door. It is to our advantage to have him for that reason. And so with that, I ask for approval of the, and this is within the budget, as part of the budget that we had presented to you. So a word of construction oversight with Dean and Dean LLC, amount of 17,000.
Why aren't we doing this in the House?
We do. We do our own construction oversight, but, but when you have projects of this size and this complexity, we use a professional architect or engineer, just as we do on, on all large projects, just as we do with Cal Valley for large construction projects. We, I mean, our, our guys oversee the, the construction inspection as well. But usually because this is complicated and it involves heat and air, plumbing, and actual construction, we usually have a construct, an architect or engineer oversight, just as we did on this building.
And the design, the, I mean, I don't know what call it, construction, engineering, whatever you want to call it. I think it's important to make sure that all the specifications that.
Are met.
We think we're buying as part of the, the project are met and they're as well. And as I, when I look back and lean on there, when something goes wrong, guess who we call? I mean, that's, I think it's part of it and I think it gives the community assurance that the proj- that we're going to get what we paid for and the project is going to be done accord, at least according to the specifications and a good value.
Just have one little question. You said that the, the contractor believes you could be done in less than 180 days.
That's it.
If that were the case, does that reduce the cost?
No, it's, it's a set price, the 529.
Okay.
But at the same token, we're not, unless there is like a major change in a, in something that we didn't see in the specifications, that then there would be a change order. But we already informed him that 529 better hold and, and we're not, and he's not going to nickel and dime us. We had that conversation and, and that would Brett, it was very flattened to the point with him that we won't be allowing him to nickel and dime us on a change order here and a changed order there. That they had an opportunity several times during the process to come and examine the whole building and every room in the building and they did.
Okay.
So we're going to hold them, hold them tight to that price.
Have contingency built in their budget anyway.
Yes, and they, and they do.
Yeah.
So, and then they, we made that very clear that change orders have to be pretty, pretty dramatic before we're going to accept them.
But they still can happen. I mean.
Oh yeah, it can. Of, of everything in a project like.
Older building.
In a project like this, of course, obviously they couldn't rip, rip out a wall to see what was behind the wall. But pretty much, since we're not tearing into the walls to rip the old pipe out, they're just putting in new, there's not a lot of things that should go wrong. But you, which, but can. You just don't know until you get it, get into the project. And because you're dealing with old, an old building, a very old building.
Thank you. Thanks for that update on that.
Yes.
I move to approve the contract for professional services, the contraction inspection for $17,000 as presented.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion?
Nothing here.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is going to be consideration of ordinance number S-3195. Reamateur, the reamaturize the special assessments for lots three through nine, Block Two of 14th Street Commons Edition, related to the sale of land bank lots to Donald R. Boyer.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, of course, we're moving forward with the sale from the land bank and of course, it's a thirty-day process because of publication in the state statute. This, of course, sets in place the specials on the property. All 20 years will be assessed, but the first assessment starting in 2019. And that's spelled out there. This is some of the process you've done on land banks you have sold where the specials were reassessed. And I believe from what we're hearing from Mr. Boyer, we close October 10th, 11th. He plans to start another house like right now. So it's a good process. He made, he made a nice bid.
I move that ordinance number S-3195 and ordinance establishing a reamaturization schedule for the special assessment of the public improvements of lots three through nine, Block Two of 14th Street Commons being sold to Donald R. Boyer be approved as presented.
Second.
Over there.
Do you have a motion and a second? So I believe we're doing roll call.
Ordinance, yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner McAlister?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item this evening is going to be executive session. Attorney-client privilege to include Ms. Logan, city manager, Commissioners, and not more than 8:15. We're back at 8:15. The motion or do we?
The emotion, yeah.
I move to adjourn from executive session. No decisions were made, no action taken.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we're back in session. Next item this evening is going to be Commissioner comments and. Next item this evening is going to be Commissioner comments and committee reports. Commissioner Ryan?
Good evening.
It does talk.
Uh-oh. Bad sign.
The Animal Shelter Board coming up in October, on October 11th, at 3 o'clock. I'll need somebody to cover that for me, 'cause I will be out of town.
October when?
11th.
October 11th.
Think I'm good for October 11th. Let me check, and I'll let you know. Where are they saying?
Where do they meet at?
At the county.
You've been on it before, right, Pat?
No. If you can't make it, I'll make it.
It's down at the county office building in the conference room.
You've got it. You got it?
What time?
3 o'clock.
1500.
Like 1500. We started, what's that, 3 o'clock thing?
I attended the Fint Hills Regional Council. Unfortunately, that's the fourth meeting in a row without a forum there. People have been busy and haven't been getting enough people in attendance. The Fint Hills Leaders Retreat will be in Olathe on January 19th and 20th. And Jana continues to work on the CDBG for Junction City on the playground equipment. And I assisted with the Fint Hills MPO, biking pedestrian count. Had quite a few people in town ask me what I was doing sitting out on a street corner. They thought I was begging again.
Yeah.
And this Thursday will be the kickoff event for...
Livewell Gary County, is it?
Yes, Livewell Gary County's...
The farmer's market?
Yeah, it'll be at the farmer's market. It'll be at, for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Pathways to Healthy Kansas Grant. We are going to have quite a bit of fun for children up there. We're going to have an obstacle course, pumpkin patch, and kids can create their own jack-o'-lanterns. And there's supposedly even going to be a zumba class going on up there.
That's good.
And we'll have a live remote from the radio station. It's called the Superhero Fun Night. So, if you want to, you can put on your Superman costume and come on out and join the crowd. We will also have a booth up, out there specifically to inform people about the Pathways Grant, and looking, actually, for help from the community to come on board and work on one of the seven pathways. There's going to be several booths out there, Livewell, or Delivering Change, Gary Rehab, GCH, and the library are all going to have booths out there, informational booths. And I will be doing my usual thing. I'll be sitting at the Livewell tent with the EBT machine being productive. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. That was a lot. Vice Mayor Landis?
I was at the Fall Classic Golf Tournament last week for the Healthcare Foundation fundraiser for the Children's Mercy Project, which has come along really well. They think they're gonna be ready to go by the, by January 1. And they raised over $38,000, and had a great time. Had a little lightning delay in the morning, but everything worked fine. Golf course is in great shape. Mr. Bernstein and staff did a really nice job out there, and had a lot of fun. I assume somebody else is gonna talk about the event this weekend, so I'll leave it to the rest of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sands?
Not much. This past weekend, we had a very good league conference in Wichita. From the moment we got there till Monday afternoon at 3 o'clock, it was very productive. Great networking opportunities, great opportunities for learning more about city government, the state, state of Kansas, and what other city communities do and don't do. It was good exchange of information. Madam Mayor, that's everything I have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Commissioner McAllister?
Madam Mayor, I don't have very much to update. I would like to make sure that City Manager Dinkle approves the electronics for the IT personnel to get my electronics fixed, so I don't have to read the consent agenda of $7 million with my iPhone. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
I have not seen the bill yet. I have not...
And we don't wanna hear serious, or Syria again in the middle of...
I thought we didn't need to do my pants.
Okay, thank you.
Is that your phone?
Unfortunately, y'all get to listen to me just a little bit longer, so I've laid out all my stuff I've been working on. So, I did attend the CBB meeting today, and I'll just touch on a couple things that came out of that meeting at lunchtime today. So, they, between October the 1st through November the 30th, they have $10,000. They're gonna have 10 $1,000 grants for marketing. They're marketing money, so if you've got a business or something like that, and, and you wanna put in for a grant, then you need to see the CBB. An example I have is, is the Milford Nature Center last year got a grant, and they built the, or had these rack cards put together. So, if you've got a business, then the CBB has some marketing grant monies coming up. They also talked a little bit about the state fair, that they'll have a report coming up next month on the total numbers of engagements and exposures that they had. A couple things did come out of it. A lot of talk from people that came to the booth about, you know, having family reunions here, having meetings here, and a lot of people are requesting for more information, and they gave out a lot of their packets, and they actually had to come back and bring more stuff down, because they had that many people going through their booths. During the week, it wasn't as busy as the weekends. During the day during the week, it was pretty busy, but in the evening, it kinda, you know, slacked off, but the weekends were pretty busy for them. So, that's a little bit on the, from CBB today. This weekend, Friday night and Saturday, is the Jammin' in JC, or the Jammin' in, what do you call that? The Jammin' in JC's Blues and Barbecue Festival down at Heritage Park, that area. So, you know, be, be sure to come out and support that. It'll be a good time. I know I've been last several years as well, as probably all the Commissioners up here. Also, this weekend, there's a lot going on. Fort Riley's got the Fall Apple Day Festival, so please come out and enjoy that. It's a very, very busy event. I know tomorrow night, myself and Commissioner Yusha from Manhattan are going to be spending three hours helping to make those pies, so hopefully, that'll be a lot of fun. I'm glad they have a recipe, and we know exactly what we have to do to get them right. September the 25th through the 27th is a Kansas Bass Nation State Team Qualifier Tournament out at Milford Lake. The 30th of September is a K-State versus Baylor Bears game. And then, on September the 30th, is a Happy Days Car Show. That's, the JC Arts Council will be putting that on. I believe it was on last year as well. So, some things we have coming up in our community for fun. Other things, and I'll look at my phones, I usually keep a lot of it on my calendar If you're interested, tomorrow at Fort Riley, Riley Conference Center, they have the Spanish Heritage Month presentation at lunchtime tomorrow. Tomorrow evening, if you go to the Business After Hours, that's gonna be at Valley View...
Thursday.
Oh, you're right, Thursday. I'm a day ahead, I'm sorry. The Spanish Heritage Month presentation is Thursday, as well as the Business After Hours at Valley View. Friday, DeVarty on post has a change of command at, at 10 o'clock. Also, at the Athletic Training Center, the Mathis Physical Therapy has ribbon-cutting ceremony at 3 o'clock. This Sunday, there's a church, I think it's at Fint Hills Church, has a big community cleanup. And I helped with that last year, as well as a lot of other of my friends and, and other volunteers in the community, but it's a big cleanup. They'll meet at Ratherton Stadium at 9 o'clock, and we'll divide up into teams, and I think Ray Ibera maybe has a little bit on the head, or, but we'll divide up into teams, and there's identified places in the community that we'll go in groups and help do some cleanup of our community, and that'll be this Sunday.
Ed Lazzier.
Ed Lazzier, I apologize for putting you on the spot.
You look alike.
Why don't see, it's, sorry about that. And, yeah. Okay, so that's that. Now, that's for the CBB and things going on in our community. So, I also attended the Military Affairs Council, since we chaired that. And one of the things that I just pointed out that came out of that meeting was, you guys already know Grant Gate, the hours are kinda reduced. Well, they are really, they're having to look at the gate hours again, so they're doing some reassessments. So, in the future, we may be expecting to see some change in the hours. I'm not sure if that's gonna be less time open, more time open, or anything like that, but they're reassessing that right now, and they'll get back to the communities at some point, whenever they've come up with their assessment on that. Couple other, last thing, I've had a lot of weekend neighborhood cleanup projects, had a lot of people come out and help, and I just wanna publicly tell, tell our community that I appreciate everybody that comes out and works in the communities to help make Junction City a more, you know, cleaner, beautiful place for all of us to live. With that, I will move on. City Manager, Mr. Dinkle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a city-county meeting scheduled for Monday at 5:00 at the Opera House, September 25th. Commissioner Bennett contacted me today, and I'm not sure what he has to plan for in the agenda yet. I know there was a food council issue you wanna talk about, or Livewell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Food Policy Council has written a policy for the county, and they're also working on one for the city, and they're going to just come present it at the joint meeting for information, to, to let us know what they're working on, where it's coming from, and...
And I'll send what you, Mr. Ryan brought me some stuff that I'll send out to you for that meeting as well, so...
And if, if I get it, there may be an updated one that I'll, I'll try to get to you tomorrow.
I won't send, I won't send out till Friday, so, okay. Be great on that. I wanna compliment my department heads tonight. You know, Cheryl did a good job of getting all the information about the FEF and our current status, I asked you, got that. Last week, we had a, come in Chief Reese here, last week, and the whole police department. Last week, we had an economic development, or a site selector looking at a, a prospect in this town, and the crime issue came up, and, and I think we're very proud of what our police department has done, not only now, but in the past, the future, I mean, as far as equipment. It's a real easy sell point, when I can say there that we've had minimal crime, and, and we, in my mind, through maybe as a forfeiture, but the guidance of our chief, the present chief and previous chiefs, along with the city commission approving, moving forward those things, and when you got that, whatever we bought tonight, license tag reader that adds security to our community, I think that's positive, and I think, I know Mickey's gonna try to lean on that, too, as far, we're a safe community to come to, and I think that's a real important thing. I also wanna compliment Chief Johnson. We brought the four engineers tonight. He put in a new process in place, and I think it went over extremely well. There's no doubt in my mind that he identified the four most qualified people, not based on how long they've been in the station, but the four most qualified people. Excellent process that saw through, and I think they did a very good job with that. On Friday, with Jammin' in JC, we've agreed to, and worked with department heads, well, if you come into the office in the afternoon, you're gonna be inconvenienced, because right in front of the office, Lance Custer's gonna be checking in barbecue teams, he helps his flow and get that going better. You can park in our side of the street, but if you come Friday afternoon, you'll get to see all the barbecue teams come through. So, I think it's just a good way we can work with the community and make that event real good. Also, wanna compliment our employees as a whole. Our, as you know, our health insurance is a two-piece, but we buy a Blue Cross policy from Blue Cross, which is the high deductible, the 6350, I believe, deductible. We pay for it, of course, then we self-insure that, that first piece with our, the arrangement with Freedom Claims. But we had a great healthier last year, one, maybe it's the plan we got, because nothing hits Blue Cross until it gets that 6300 amount, so they don't count the, the 500s and the thousands that we self-insure. We got a refund this last month of $212,394.40.
Great.
We're depositing that into our health, our employee funds. That way, down the road, if we get tweaks up, it's, everything's happening. We've had some savings, we're still identifying that amount we had from self-insuring ourselves, but that, that first piece. But I think it's a process that we can provide our employees at least some benefit. Would like to see that increase at some time, but just a way to, to battle future increases. So, you know, it's one, when we were healthy, and that's, that's always a good thing. But secondly, it's being well-used, and, and like I said, to get a refund like that is just amazing, and, and I attribute all to the employees and, and the whole program we're doing.
Can I ask you a question on that? So, that money, at some point, if the rates were to go up, would be to help offset the rates for the employees?
Yeah. In other words, and, and the city, too. And if, in other words, if the rates go up 5% next year, maybe we could sit here and say, okay, we can negate a half of it, or all of it, depends on the year, and, and financial management and everything else. It helps string out. I think the thing we try to do, from our standpoint, is, is keep the costs as low as you can, as long as you can. I mean, they're gonna increase, it's just the way life is. Get over it. But, but the point is, is, is by having the plans in place, and then the savings on it, I think we extend the amount of time, you know? And if we do this for a few years, then maybe you look at adding a benefit, and that's, and that'll be a discussion down the road.
Okay.
But it was just very positive news.
Yep, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Ms. Logan?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Beatty?
Well, actually, I've been working with Ms. Logan. Where, we've had last year, and this year again, complaints about peddlers coming late at night at the doors, and it scares the little old ladies and guys that are single by themselves, and, and so, we're gonna put together a peddler's ordinance that would limit the time and present it to you for an eight-day, just so, and you can think about that, whether you'd agree or disagree on it, but we're gonna present that. And then, I did not forget, I wanted to let you, I didn't forget, but I wanna meet with staff before I present to you, and I've had a discussion with Katie Logan on finding people more for when they don't get a building permit. And so, well, after discussion, I, I discovered that we have, you have lots, you have lots of options, and so, I wanna have a further discussion with staff, and then we'll narrow that down to what staff might recommend, but we'll present the options to you, and then what staff may or may not recommend to you, and then we'll go from there. So, I didn't forget, we're just working on it.
Okay.
Okay. Then, we did start the renovation of the old city hall commission room, and so, soon we should have that available for you to use as a training room and/or meeting room, as one large space meeting room. I attended the LKM conference with Shauna, I mean, the NPR conference with Shauna first. Their meeting was a lot about being more progressive with cyber liability, because they're getting more and more claims about computer systems being hacked, and, and what causes and the liability that you face with that. And so, there, they put together a program for a training program for their staff, and how to avoid, ways to avoid being hacked, and so, I'm gonna catch up with IT and incorporate that into a, a training program for staff, probably train all staff on it at some point. They said to get to our department heads first, 'cause we're the ones on the computer the most. Then, the risk management in general was, several subjects on that, and, see, what else? What else did you, was the, the biggie on? Did it, just a lot of talk about cyber liability. Okay, then, we, we also, I also attended the, the league conference. I did attend a four-hour update slash training class on nuisance abatement, 'cause I wanted to see if there was anything new or exciting in, in the laws or changes that I could incorporate into what we're doing in building and codes, and there really isn't. But it was a good refresher course for me, and I'll take all the information and do a refresher course for our staff. We're basically doing what everybody else is doing. The reminder throughout the class, and I know you hear it, too, is the, the public gets frustrated with us because it just takes time, but the word from the league was, it takes time. It takes time to go through the process, it takes time to, to go through abating a property and getting it to court, and, you know, especially on demolitions, they, he gave several examples where it takes anywhere from nine months to two years. And an example of the, one of the cases he gave, it took over two years, because in the middle of the case, they found out there was a new owner, so they had to start all over, and, just like what we're doing with the case we had tonight. And he's, and the reminder kept, he kept saying, is, this stuff takes time, be patient. Then, we did the prep work for the city hall project. I've got everything ready to go for moving offices as, as we need. for moving offices as we need, we'll be moving the offices that need to be done to get out of the way of the contractors on the last week in October, to fit in with his schedule, and they hope to be rocking and rolling on that project starting next week. They're, they're doing their setup right now, and then they'll probably be actually starting knocking down walls and building stuff next, sometime next week. So we'll keep you up to date on that project as we go along.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh-uh.
Ms. Settles? Chief Briesie?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Commissioners and especially the public, I wanted to inform you all that this Sunday, Lieutenant Jeff Childs will be retiring from the Junction City Police Department after thirty-two years of service. And Jeff is going to be, going to work for the school district, and imparting his knowledge and to students about law enforcement officers. And so we plan on having a retirement reception on October nineteenth, and it's going to be at the Law Enforcement Memorial in Heritage Park, and depending on the weather, we may move it, we're also reserving the Opera House for the reception, in case we have to move in because of bad weather. Also, next Thursday, I will be the guest speaker at the Mac Breakfast at the Marriott, and I will be talking about the Junction City Police Department, and how safe our community really is based on crime stats, and a little bit about the FBI National Academy, so invite you all to come out next Thursday, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Briesie. Chief Johnson?
Nothing ma'am.
Mr. Ibera?
Just a couple things, ma'am.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
I'm down on the street maintenance program, right now they're working on clink, they are at the corner of Tenth and Washington, doing the ramps there, and once they do that, they will go, on the west side, they will then go to the east side, starting at Seventh and Washington, and continue those ramps down to Tenth Street. We started the street maintenance project, they have milled from East Street all the way, on H Street, from East Street all the way to Jackson, and then they've done Seventh Street from, they will do Seventh Street from Webster to Franklin, but they haven't done the two blocks between Washington and Jefferson, and Jefferson and Adams for the Blues and Barbecue. Once that's done, then they'll go ahead and mill that, and they started overlaying on H Street, and then they are going to start milling in the residential area on Third Street, and it should go, I believe, from Webster all the way to Washington Street, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. The ramps and all are looking really good, and I see them out there even on the weekend working, so appreciate that. Chris from Mr. Lazzier?
Peterson.
Oh.
Is Ann thinking of that?
Chris from Mr. Peterson, looks like it read well right.
Viola, yeah.
Viola, okay. Well, I don't see Mr. Lazzier, so I guess we have nothing from him. Germaine?
Yes, Madam Mayor, actually, Commissioner McAllister, the price of the new computer for you and for Commissioner Ryan doesn't take city manager's approval for the fiscal policy. I've already requested a quote from them to see what it's going to cost.
You and I are on the same page, Jim. Thank you. We'll just cut out the middle guy and get it done. Good job.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Great, thanks. Mr. Osborne?
Nothing, Sebby ma'am.
Well, I think we've covered everybody.
Who did it, Jordan?
Take it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Aye.
Okay, we're done.
I'm fine.
I can't believe, I even marked it on here.
I can give you mine, because I still have my plan, it still works.